Follow replay.
Okay, top class.
All right. Seven o'clock, it's probably being ordered to start with pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart. First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Move to approve the agenda of the July 21st, 2020 regular meeting as presented.
Settle.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda items. Move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I'll settle.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. The public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period and each speaker will be allowed of no more than five minutes per policy BDDH one, public participation at board meetings. The following guidelines and procedures will be followed. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once and each speaker will be allowed of no more than five minutes. I see no public participation. Next, we have report of the superintendent.
Yes, um, thank you and I hope you're all doing well. We've set my presentation up behind you so you may have to turn a little bit. In your board packet, there are a couple of notes of appreciation. One is from an employee and the other is from St. Vincent de Paul. It's a 2019 year of appreciation. Um, and they sent a plaque with us, so we have placed that in district office just a week ago. The next item on our report is that we will hold the 2020 school tax rate hearing on Tuesday, August 25th um, at 7:00 PM prior to the regular, uh, regular board meeting. Um, and we'll determine as we get closer to that whether it will be in this location, if we'll be back in the projection room, or if it will be live streamed. It, it's just going to depend on the guidance from county health and CDC. So we'll make that announcement once we know what we can do. Okay? Um, the other thing that I'm going to add to my report is reopening school. I know there's a lot of, uh, a lot of questions around that plan. And, you know, here we are on July 21st and school is still a month away because our first day, day back wouldn't be until August 24th. So we have had meetings with county health, uh, the hospital. We have guidance from local pediatricians. Um, they're, we're actually meeting with them again this week. Um, yesterday, we had a large committee come in and in the performing arts center, we spent the entire day trying to determine what methods of instruction to offer our parents and our students. Um, so we ended up having to split into an elementary and a middle school, high school, um, groupings. And so they spent time and made some decisions. Um, they're not final solid plans, but we're going to work on, uh, solidifying those pretty soon and getting parents some information so they know what options are available today. Uh, as far as the large plan with, uh, details of what sanitation products and options and things we will have available to the students and what the requirements are on our, I'm sorry, to staff and then what the requirements are as far as like mask and face shields. Um, that big plan, we plan to publish by August 7th. August 7th would be the latest date. It will come out sometime during that first weekend, August. It changes daily. We did get, uh, a folder, a Google folder from, uh, MS, Massa. And in it, they're asking all school districts in the state that are Massa members to put their reopening plan. So that's been a great resource, um, I think, or it will be as we can have time to really dig into some of those. Bailey, uh, communications director has done an excellent job of compiling what we could get our hands on to this point and kind of rough draft and sketch in what we think and how we want our plan to look. There's still a lot of meetings that are going to have to happen before that plan is ready to go out and that's what we're working on. I want people to know we're not just sitting around waiting. This is, this is a monument, monumental task. Um, no one's ever done this, so it, it's pretty stressful at times. But we're going to make choices that are best for our students and our families and to make sure our staff members are safe. For the public, you see the face shields that we're all sporting tonight. Um, our staff members will all have the option of having the face shield. Um, we're also providing them with two masks and we did put some guidance out last week asking parents to obtain one, two masks if they can for their child. We're also going to be in the next few days, uh, putting that announcement out because we know there are people in the community who have volunteered to give us child size and adult size masks because they're making them anyway for like the hospital and other organizations. We are going to put something out and start accepting those. Uh, we've talked to county health about that because if we have a student come in that needs a mask, we should, we need to be able to give them something. So if we have to give them back, we're going to ask the students to bring them back. We'll have a location where they drop them, we'll launder them according to what we were told to do and redistribute as needed, so. I'm trying to think, am I missing anything? Oh, yes. And I want to, we want to thank everyone, staff members, uh, parents for taking the time to take that survey. We know it was long, um, but there's some really valuable information in there that's helping guide the process that we're working on right now. And then the last thing I'll add, I know we had to cancel band camp. People need to realize that the guidance, I know we all know socially distanced six feet apart is the recommendation. But when you're talking about an instrument that you're forcing air through, um, that guidance drastically changes. Some of those instruments, the guidance moves up to nine feet apart. Um, so Mr. Winnie and I think some of the students just did not feel comfortable holding band camp with those more stringent guidelines and really having to spread out that much. So, you know, just realize that the guidance can't be the same for every activity. Six feet is the minimum that we're going to try to stick to, but there are some things that the guidance is much larger. Especially when you're talking about being required. So do you all have any questions for me?
Dr. Flea, I had some parents ask about getting ready for school. I just go to school about it the normal way except possibly add to that, help your child understand about wearing a mask as best they can and how to wash their hands, things like that. Any other advice?
I think that's really good advice. Because like I said, we, we've worked through the different methods and options that will be available to parents. It's really going to be, how they prepare their child is really going to be dependent on what they choose. If they know they want them to be at school, whether it's traditional or a blend, like a blended model where they're home a few days and they're here, um, they're going to need their school supplies and they're going to need those things. So if they think and were able to do an on-campus option, then yes, they need to move forward with buying the supplies and preparing for school like they normally would.
They could need those supplies even at home though, really?
Probably most of them, yes.
Maybe not as much, but.
Probably most of them, yes. Of course, we'll, we provide the phone book.
Right.
With the thought with the funding thing in Catholic state is now if there might be pullback to school potentially, is there any, are they going to fund us again fully or let's, have you heard anything or?
I haven't heard anything else. Our July payment was very small. Because they, they took all of the withhold that the governor announced from the budget and they withheld everything from our July payments. Does that mean that's the only withhold or restriction that's going to happen? No, I think there will be more withhold and restrictions as we get down the road, potentially every month. It just depends on the state of the economy right now. And in the future is depending on where this virus goes.
Do you know when all the extra supplies for cleaning and sanitation, they're, they're, we're still going, right?
Yes, we are. Um, but we are trying to access FEMA grant money to help cover some of that. And then the county does have a grant also, and so we're also submitting items to the county to see if we can get funding somewhere. We are not crossing over and double dipping. We are taking those items and saying, this goes to county and this goes to FEMA. We want to make sure that that's clear and we're not trying to double dip. We're just trying to get some of these expenses covered in as many ways as possible. I think it was last month, I shared the, the grant, the $5,000 grant that we got to help with some, that we obtained, that actually Bailey and Gina Lidle, our director of nursing, um, obtained to help cover some nursing supplies. And then, like I said last month, we're just looking for anything and everything that we can do to help cover some of this. Cause there, it's a lot.
So expenses are up or revenue is down?
Very much. Yes.
Beyond, I mean, I know as a board, we appreciate the COVID money from the county, from FEMA. Have you gotten any sort of guidance as far as school federally or from city?
You mean reopening? Well, I think we've all heard the federal government's side. Even our, um, uh, Betsy DeVos, who runs the Department of Education for the federal, is saying open schools are, you could potentially lose your federal money. And I believe I heard from someone that the governor is saying open schools too, so. But you know, I understand that there are people out there that want schools to open, but I also understand there are people and families out there that have children and or loved ones in the home that have medical conditions that put them at higher risk, so they need options. They need to figure out and identify the best way and the best option for their entire family to keep that loved one or that, that child safe.
So I guess more specifically, has, have, has the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education or the Department of Education given any assistance as far as guidance as far as reopening? What to do, what not to do?
They, they directed this to the CDC Berlin and DHSS, but the commissioner of education in the state of Missouri, along with the governor, have said that it is a local control decision and they will not tell districts what to do in local communities, what cities to make. And I know in other states, like New York, across the border in Illinois, uh, their governor is telling them, we're going to reopen schools. But that was what he said several weeks ago and I don't know if that's changed. But no, everything is local control, you make the decision.
And we're moving forward at this point with sports also?
Yes. Nisha has, yes, Nisha has put out, uh, guidelines that basically say the same thing that they said in the spring. If you're having face-to-face classes, then you can do face-to-face sporting, or you can do sporting events. If you're not having face-to-face classes, then you can't participate in sporting events.
Dr. Flea, does that mean, um, or could that mean not only in, in, uh, class, but like virtual or, uh, like at home, in school at home? Or that means you have to be in school?
Well, I'm going to look at Bailey. I think from the way I read it, you have to have your doors open and some students in school.
Yes, I don't know that they said you have to have all students in all by the week. They're just saying you have in-person instruction, evening hours, activities. If you have no in-person instruction, um, that's, that's.
Well, that, that is the concern that, that I, that we asked, we, well, we've got to have some who's, uh, in, in school and some they talk, because that's who they're near another school to room. And then the other question was, are we going to be, have enough people to make sure we can stand in place in the classroom?
We're working on that.
I hope. But you know, it was, that was the biggest concern, are we going to? Well, I'm going to tell you, the ones that I talked to said, not that they didn't want the kids home, but they didn't want to have a teacher. And they weren't, you know, like they weren't work, they weren't sure that they were doing well. So I think that was the fear, you know?
Yeah, that's, it's going to depend on the spread of the virus in our community.
I told them that we were going to make sure everything, we were going to, we could make sure that the students were safe and so was the faculty and everybody out there.
So going back to the band, because people are very nervous. Will there be any band this year?
I don't know that we have answers to that either.
Because, um, these are, I don't, uh, pass all, you're face-to-face, you're cool. So I guess, after, why? I'm not having that.
Yeah, and you know, I've got, I've received a lot of questions about prom. Why couldn't we hold a prom? You know, if you look at our junior and senior class, that's about 250 kids. And that decision, you know, a lot of people are like, why did you, me and me, cancel that? And I'm like, I was not even a part of that discussion. That is a high school activity and the students involved in that discussion, you, you seniors, made that choice. It wasn't me telling anybody what to do. Same thing with graduation, the kids and Mr. Haney and Dr. Boyd, they were a part of that. It wasn't me telling them when graduation complete. Our students have been involved in a lot of these decisions, most of the decisions, I would say. So they're a part of the process. And you know, with prom, they really spoke up and said, you know, we have to be responsible to our community and to have a prom with, you know, with all 200, a big attend, you know? Um, but you know, to have a large gathering like that, is that really the responsibility?
Dr. Flea, I was really impressed with some of those too because I was around a few of them and a couple of older people made comments, why can't we, say can we have this? And I'm going to tell you, they could do all the good in their voice. And it was really, your family stayed down.
Yes. The leader of reprograms that we run at the elementary and make sure it goes up to the end of school. It, that's what it's all about. They, this is their school, we're here to help them and to guide them. They need to be a part of the decision process. Because once they walk out of these walls with that diploma, all decisions are on them. You know, they're adults in here.
And you've got a lot.
Yes.
Dr. Flea, I heard a few teachers talking and I didn't know, I'm sure we have plans to arm parents with this information, but if we go blended or, um, if a parent has the option and selects alternative method of instruction and does instruction at home, some teachers had discussed that that's going to be more rigorous this fall than it was in the spring. It's not going to look like what it looked like in the spring, is that accurate?
That is very accurate. It, it will be taught just like we teach it in the classroom, pretty much. The, the rigor, um, deadlines, pacing guides, grades, um, you're going to be very careful and you're going to have to earn a grade.
Is there a certain date of, somebody has started to do the virtual learning that they tend to like to know?
We're working on that. We have not really set any of those deadlines hard fast yet. I think we discussed it yesterday, we might have an idea, but we're not ready to say this is what we can do and this is what we have to do by.
If they make a choice when school's starting and the virus lets up, say, and they want to start returning school or vice versa, that the outbreak gets worse, can they, can they change at some point? Or, I mean, I know you don't want to cure a week and at home a week and, you know, but at some, do they have the discretion to alter that?
I, I will share what other districts are doing. Other districts are putting out an application and parents have to commit to whatever method they're going to use. And it's for the entire first semester. I understand because I don't know how it flows. If we want to do a variety of models, methods, and we want our, our staff to do the instruction. There are kids, we want our people working with them. We don't want to set them up on an online platform and just turn loose and not have any connection or, um, direct contact with them. We believe a piece of that accountability that will be, that will make it more successful and the accountability to be higher is that connection with our staff. So we, we want to try to figure out how our staff can do the different methods. Does that make sense? Yeah. Do you two have anything to add to that?
I think it, it becomes a staffing issue as well because if we decide on a blended or we decide on traditional and we set up our staffing according to that and then we get some students a quarter wanting to change and there's, you know, 25 or 30, where do we place them with our staff? And that's where it comes. It's not that we don't want to let them come into school if it lets up or transition to home. It's that for our staffing and the assignments that we have to make to prepare for whatever method we're willing to do, that's where it comes here.
Dr. Flea, are, are other schools having prophecy on? Can you, if we offer, uh, blend, whatnot blended, but if we offer, uh, virtual or, uh, online and a parent selects that, can their children participate in extracurriculars?
Do you have anyone to help me out with the mission guidance?
Do you remember? Right, so, um, by school districts, again, that's the highest, is that by school district, if school district has students and, you know, taking a portion, at least a portion of in-person classes, then yes. Um, but as far as, I don't know, I don't personally see that yet, but we're still waiting for that. I, I, I don't know. As an individual student, taking your personal strategy, we can't.
I gave no.
Part of it that I.
Nisha gave no figures for sending them in school versus virtual. She just said, I guess, wait, read, they have one, one student in school, the rest are virtual. Do you have all your co-creator activities? If I read it correctly.
It just doesn't make sense to me if you're going to keep your child home, but you want him to play sports. Doesn't one counteract the other? That's my only thought, right?
Yeah, because it won't be close for me.
Yes, and you know, participation in Nisha's sanctioned activities is a privilege. It's not a right. Nobody has a right or is entitled to be on a sports team. Whereas everyone that comes to school here has a right to a pretty inappropriate education. They're two separate different thing, they're two separate things. And I think people sometimes think just because my kid goes to your school, they should be able to play basketball or whatever on your basketball team. That's not true. There's higher standards and more accountability, um, requirements that your child has to meet. And if he or she can't, then they can't be a part of that privilege.
I assume yes, but will we still offer lunch and meals to every student, no matter what offer?
I'm going to assume yes, that there's a webinar on that tomorrow. So I, I guess the appropriate answer would be, I don't know with this stuff.
I'm sure you'd be working hard, so, thank you.
Yes. So I would want you to know by, um, by the first weekend, August.
Yes, first weekend, August. And that's version one. Secondly, in August, we may have version two.
Wasn't that on the 24th, but.
Uncharted, right now.
Yes. First day of school is August 24th.
If we start, and the numbers go up, we have to revert back.
Yeah.
Thank you guys for all the, all the hard work.
Yes, um, and yesterday, like I said, we had this large meeting, large, what were they, 30?
About 30, about 30 individuals, socially distanced.
Socially distanced, wearing masks, face shields. So, you know, administrators, uh, you know, teachers, support staff, um, union reps. It was a great, it were great discussions. It was really great to like get it started and try to step back and let it flow. So it was a really good discussion and I really appreciate the time and all the effort that people were putting into, you know, providing us with information that we got. It's really been a stressful process, but also a really great process to see all the different ideas evolve.
Thank you very much. I feel like I've said that every meeting at a different level for four months in a row, but thank you.
That's the end of my report.
Any unfinished business?
I don't have any unfinished business. I just have a little watermelon slide for you. It's a good July picture.
Looks very good. Next, we have new business per food service prices.
And I thought you might enjoy this, I think Hallmark and several other channels are doing Christmas in July, so.
Oh, yeah.
I've seen some of those meetings. I don't think Dr. Taylor would. All right, school lunch prices. We have Mrs. Lori Roth, who's our core data, um, food service assistant. And Lori has done the calculation to the federal pricing requirement and we are required to increase our full pay student breakfast and lunch prices by 10 cents for this upcoming school year. Reduced breakfast and lunch prices will not increase. So down the block is the table and so reduced breakfast and lunch, well, reduced breakfast will stay at 30 cents a day. Reduced lunch will stay at 40 cents a day. Full pay breakfast at the elementary and the middle school, high school increases to a dollar forty per day. And lunch for elementary and middle school, high school increases at the elementary to 280, I'm sorry, at the elementary to 280 and at the middle school and high school to 290 a day. Um, and then if you look at the adult prices on the bottom, those are also increasing 10 cents from last year.
I think it says on full pay, it's about 30 cents.
Yeah, yes, full pay, I'm sorry, elementary and middle school, high school breakfast is a dollar fifty. Sorry, I was trying to nab me around. Somebody said. So that is the increases that we are going to have to make. Do you have any questions on those increases? Do you have any questions on those increases?
We had to go up last year at least.
We had to go up last year also. I think it was the year before we did not.
It was how much, like 10 cents last year, 5 cents?
10 cents last year. It seems like we can't ever reach the threshold because it always increases, so.
I'll move to food service prices for the 2020, 21 school year.
Perfect.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have revised language on support staff salary schedule.
Yes. Last month, you approved the salary schedule. But what we also did last month from the 2020 need to defer process with our support staff group. For less than 12-month employees, many years ago, they negotiated a benefit and they turned it vacation days. And again, this is only for less than 12-month employees. 12-month employees get vacation days and can use vacation days in a vacation day way. Less than 12-month employees have what we term vacation days, but they can only use them on like inclement weather days or days like over Christmas break when they were going to have a smaller check to kind of supplement their pay and make sure that they have a more consistent pay. There's always been a lot of confusion, especially with our new employees. You know, they think they have vacation days, but then when they try to use them, they don't have vacation days. So we worked with the support staff group and we are wanting to rename, we did rename in the policy, less than 12-month employee vacation days to a longevity benefit. And so we also added to that, we created a calendar to show exactly where, how many days you did are going to be applied. So we did change the policy in June. We just need to change the language of the salary schedule because we missed it. Carrie and I missed it. We need to send it to you. So I apologize for that.
I move to approve the revised language on the support staff salary schedule for the 2020, 21 school year. Salary schedule to catch for the mutation of the longevity days.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have action for a closed meeting.